I called the Village of Onbeck Planning Board meeting for October 15th.
Folks, folks.
When you forward the order?
Folks, excuse me. The microphone's on.
First item today is KRC Planning, Smoky Rock Barbecue Site Plan and Special Use. And our Q. So, trying to recall where we were with this. Have you made progress on your end?
We have. So, I haven't...
Sorry.
What? Yeah, introduce me. So, Natalie Quinn, KRC Planning Consultant, so project manager.
Sean O'Keefe, Sevland here.
Josh Paul, Architect.
Mr. New York.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, we... There is a presentation if we could slide through that, but I think what we feel that we submitted a complete site plan application and revised elevations for your consideration at this meeting. So, we now have the full site plan set with erosion sediment control, demolition plan, site plan, truck, attorney, movements, and all of that.
And the view is nice to see the way it's going to look.
And then we also have an architectural set in there that not only has the elevations. So, I'll run through this PowerPoint really quick, and I think that'll kind of orient us to the new materials and then happy to like dive into those and pull up the large documents if that's helpful.
You want to just run through the whole PowerPoint or?
Yeah, I think we might have switched to the site plan rather than the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Yeah, we just... Yeah, I'll go through that real quick, and I think we can get to that site plan set and dive into any questions.
Which, um...
Very tough.
The first one. Okay. All right, that's the PowerPoint.
Yeah, when you click to the next slide, did it go to the...
Because you can out... Yeah.
Yeah, sure as heck then goes to the site plan. Oh, you may have to go back to and then scroll down.
Yes.
One more? There you go. And then we'll scroll down, so. On this slide, we'll keep this quick because you've seen this slide a few times. This is the existing site, 6367 Mill Street. Currently houses Smoky Rock Barbecue, the restaurant, and it's in the Village Center District. The site altogether is .77 acres. As mentioned, existing use is the restaurant with a footprint of just under 2,500 square feet. There's outdoor dining in the front yard and a rear patio, parking in the back. The proposed use is to maintain that existing restaurant with the front yard dining. And in the rear, which you'll see on the site plan, is the construction of one structure that will house four apartment units, so a four-unit multifamily building kind of on the back portion of the lot, hidden behind the existing structure. So, we did receive a determination from the zoning officer at the beginning of this process kind of stating although apartments are a specific use in the Village Center, those have to be on top of the commercial use. So, because this is a separate structure behind the commercial use, it's deemed multifamily rather than the apartment classification. This is an updated kind of revised full requirement table. This matches what's on the site plan set. And we're still... I talked to Ryan today by email, and I know we're still waiting the zoning officer's official review of the zoning compliance, but we believe based on this, and I can kind of walk through this, that we meet all the zoning requirements in terms of the lot area. We have... It requires 4,000 square feet. We have 34,000 square feet. Existing front yard is kind of already set back 51 feet, which is beyond the maximum of five feet, but that is because that front yard dining area, the outdoor dining, that was approved a few uses ago. Minimax side yards, those are the new side yards for the structure in the rear, right? So, five feet on the north side, 20 feet on the... Just over 20 feet on the south side. Our rear yard, we have a big kind of wetland in the back of this site, so the rear yard is quite large at 142 feet. Frontage and width are the same. And then building height, the new structure is three stories, 35 feet, so below the maximum. And we are only proposing... We're increasing the lot coverage by a bit, but we're still quite a bit under the 75% maximum. Parking, we talked a lot about this at the last time I was here, so this is just a reiteration of that information. Based on our calculations, we believe that 29 spaces are required. That's two spaces per residential unit. And then for the restaurant, it's one space for every four indoor seats and one space for every eight outdoor seats. So, with 62 seats inside and 44 outside, that requires 21 spaces for that, so altogether 29. We have 15 spaces on site. We're proposing 15 spaces. We'll kind of show you how we reallocated those spaces based on the placement of the building, so no net loss of spaces except there is, you know, four of the spaces will be dedicated to the residential units within kind of enclosed garages underneath each unit, and the restaurant will have access to the remaining 11 spaces. So, we believe this meets the requirement of the fee and lieu of parking. It's 48% of the requirement, which is under the 50%, and the applicant or the property owner, business owner, is willing to kind of pay the fee because as they understand it, users of their restaurants do often kind of park in the municipal parking and walk around to a lot of different businesses, so that fee towards the municipal parking seems fair to them. And then existing conditions. Again, kind of, you know, you've seen this, but what you're seeing in the back there is that large wetland space and the 100-foot buffer. And when we scroll to the site plan on the next one, you'll see that that back row of parking spaces is where the new structure is going. And how we are retaining 15 parking spaces on site is we are extending kind of those island parking spaces, using some of that rear patio to provide more kind of efficiently aligned parking there. So, we can scroll to the next one, which is the site plan.
This, just before we go, this... These spaces here, what are these?
Those are parking spaces on the existing...
All right, so this is not the proposed?
This is existing, yeah. This is existing.
All right, okay.
And then so when, yeah, when you get to the next one, you'll see that's kind of where the new buildings, the new building is going, the new units. And you'll kind of see on the southern island parking is where we gained some spaces there to still retain the total number of 15 spaces. And then there's still... There's four under each... Each of those units has a parking space underneath it in the garage structure. We did, and we did find a way to expand that rear kind of drive aisle, so that is the required 24 feet now, meaning code. And I think if we scroll to the next slide, we even did a... We did a truck turning. This is so you can kind of see how the refuse truck would come in. The refuse kind of storage areas being moved from the north side of the site to the south side right there. Absolutely. So, we kind of wanted to show how that vehicle would get into this space and then exit, and then exit the property. And then we can get down into elevation is the next. And like I said, we can go back to all of these and talk in more detail. So, if you zoom out a little bit, I think you'll see kind of all four sides of the structure. And these are the elevations. We can come back to these, but I think it might be more helpful if we get, starting to get into the renderings. So, next slide actually is like some context. I know we talked a lot, maybe not last meeting, but the meeting before, about trying to pull in aspects of existing kind of design factors around. So, we did a little bit of a kind of style guide of some of the concepts that we tried to pull into the design and where we're seeing those elsewhere. So, you can have the garage carriage house storage thing that you're seeing up there on the top, and then the bottom row is where you're seeing gable dormer that we used for inspiration in our design. And then we did a photorealistic rendering of the structure. So, you kind of see, you know, again, we had to do this with the existing photo and existing kind of foliage that's on site as much as possible. So, it's three-story structure. We did try and go the route of making this kind of a nod to a historic carriage house and trying to use that style with the garage doors. And then if you keep going down, you'll kind of see that we have... We tried to do photos from the public right-of-way. So, you can kind of see this is behind the existing structure, and you'll start to see a little bit of what aspects of this you would see from the road.
The renders are based on surveys. LRC set 10-foot-high poles at each corner of the structure, so we dialed into that, so it's fairly accurate in terms of the scale.
Sorry, this one's more for your names for the minutes.
Josh Paul.
Oh, yes.
And Sean Curran.
Sean Curran, thank you.
So, that's it for the presentation, and then we brought the team here to kind of dive into some of this. I know there were questions about the site plan at the last meeting in terms of the stormwater management on site, so I don't know if we have the zoom in of that in this presentation, but if you wanted to go to the site plan set, I think that is sheet SG1, which is the... The fifth sheet on there.
This one's?
Yep, that's site plan.
One more sheet.
One more sheet down.
Yeah, we was about you. So, for the stormwater runoff, which is basically the roof leaders and the roof of the house and the new asphalt, vehicle related, we're proposing stormwater infiltration systems. The isolator rows, they basically collect any stormwater runoff and then infiltrate it into the ground. Historically, the area around here has run-of-bank sandy gravel, so it's good infiltration rates. If you run into an area that has poor infiltration rates, like collecting the old ice cream put goods down in. Don't need any of it. This is a small collection system that's accounted for any calculations for hard surface. It's about it for the stormwater.
I don't know if there is more questions on the site plan. Otherwise, if we want to go into the elevations, I think Josh can talk a little bit more about kind of design and what we tried to pull in there based on inspirations we saw around the village.
Just one question. In earlier drawings, you saw right-of-way coming. Was all your sewage or water?
Correct, there's a sanitary easement that runs directly to the middle of the site.
That's this?
No, if you scroll down the page, I believe the water, sewer water is one below it. Scroll all over if you'd like. There you go. Yeah, so there's a sanitary easement that runs directly through the patio area of the site. Right here, there.
Yeah.
You could tap into that?
Correct.
And then there's the water easement is on the south side of the property, right?
Correct.
That way, which is why we kind of moved the refuse and the movable kind of materials over there rather than the structures so that that is all still accessible.
Correct. We contacted the water superintendent, and he said, "Was the material, if you could remove it, we had to get access to the water line?" That's why we're taking the papers that are already there and using these things for that. So, if at any point there's ever problem with the water line, it's easy access for him to get in.
And these are all these simple units or these are all, I guess it's a multifamily own, by the same entity?
Yeah.
I guess the reason I'm asking is they'll collect all the wastewater into one pipe then and make one connection rather than four connections.
Yes.
So, you don't have the conflict with the stormwater in the middle there for the middle year.
Correct, right, leave it to the line.
Right.
Do you have one more to make for four properties?
It's a multifamily. One water, one sewer.
Yeah, they'll be rental units, so it's... They won't be separate condos.
So, I guess the main question that we had was the parking. And we'll say if, now this is why we need David Gordon's assistance. I looked back and back at that if we had this last time, and there's nothing. This thing was created several iterations ago, and 15 spots were said to be enough, five or 10 or more years ago. And so, we have no history of how the termination was made because theoretically these 29 spots. So, are we reading the code by saying, you know, they already have 15 and maybe go up to 30 or 50%? Is that the code? Or was the code decision why it's new spots, you gotta have half of real?
This, as I said last time, this proposal should be interpreted as an amended site plan for the entire set. By the way, I'm giving you my interpretation, but the real interpreter of this would be the CEO if it ever came to that. I'm not sure if twice anybody's been consulted, but in my view, the only way that we can understand is that it's going from existing site plan to a new site plan that is obviously substantially expanded because they have a new building. So, the question becomes is the parking sufficient under our code for the new site plan, given everything that's in it? A new site plan includes the restaurant and includes the multifamily building, and so you add up those needs and you add up what they're proposing. I mean, what's difficult here is that this is a very aggressive use of the code because they're essentially proposing 50% of the parking. So, it's... And that's what our code says. We may want to... The code's going to be amended over the next year or two, so we need to include that's exactly what we want, but that's what's there in that. And so, the question becomes in their proposed new amended site plan, are they reading the code requirements for parking?
So, just to grab a phrase that David just used, an aggressive use of the code. That is where Justin needs to discuss and go over with a, based on the parking requirements and just his overall project. Unfortunately, Justin's schedule last week could not permit him to have a formal discussion with the attorney here, so hopefully that can happen leading up to the November 5th meeting, and then it'll be resolved. But I think that, right there, aggressive use of the code is exactly why Justin needs to converse with...
Because the last code change we made, we had the part in lieu of these just being thrown out, that, "Okay, I need 10 spots. I'll pay $10,000 and make 10 fake spots." And then they, John and Tim and the committee, said, "No, what we want you to do is have half of them be real spots." And Marcus Street Restaurant, which was grandfathered as zero spots, and always been a restaurant, wanted to use upstairs to have a restaurant.
And live on apartment.
You know, or apartment. Whatever, they needed four, they needed eight spots, I think, whatever they wanted up there. And we said, "Well, you need four of them to be real, because you can't do it." And they, you know, were not able to do it. So, because we said that new stuff you're adding now would have to be half-real, and they don't have any four spots.
So, your concern is that they're adding X amount of real estate, but they're adding zero parking, and you're looking at the code requiring half-park. What are you calling?
I don't know. I need interpretation with Ken.
Again, my interpretation would be to look at the thing holistically, but I would also point out to the board that in addition to the code, that you also have a seeker review here. This is a new building. This is, in fact, it's a new use on the site, so we're doing seeker on this. And so, if there are impacts that you're concerned about that aren't quite represented in the code, to the extent that they can, they would come out in the seeker review, they're still there. So, if this is going to cause a traffic situation, if this is going to cause a parking situation, I also had some questions, which I didn't want to leave with, but we're losing probably more than half that patio, and I just want to know to what extent that impacts the neighborhood and whether it impacts the building at all, whether it cuts down their need for parking. I don't know, but I think it's... That's what the cost is of this, of the new land that they're using for the units. They're moving on the parking, and so you're losing half that pad, more than half of that patio, at least in my eye, and I'd love to know more about it. So, the point is, you've got seeker jurisdiction as well, if something pops up that you think is dumping here by the code.
Yeah, and because if we're reviewing the whole thing, they indicated that because they added some retail, they're not using the whole restaurant anymore.
Does not retail, I mean the bakery. Yeah, they extended some of the indoor seating as part of the bakery. The rear patio has not been used for seating patrons for quite a while now just because of staffing. They just realized they can't run that many tables, so they've kind of reduced the total number of tables inside and outside. And so, that rear patio space, while it is the entrance, I think we talked about that, but the rear of the building has to be the entrance because of liquor authority.
Yes.
So, that is still providing an entrance, which is why part of the patio is kind of being retained, but the majority of outdoor, or all of the outdoor seating is actually in the front, in the front space. And I think, you know, to your point about the half, like, we are still, we do feel that we are showing that we are providing half of each of, for each of the required uses, right? So, 21 spaces is required for the restaurant. We're providing 11 for them. Eight spaces are required for the multifamily. We're providing four spaces for them. I think the other thing that's kind of unfortunate is that apartments in this district only require one space per unit, but because this is deemed multifamily rather than apartment, we have the two spaces. So, it's the code, and that's what the regulation is, but I think in terms of the character of parking elsewhere, what we're providing for the units, if this was deemed apartments, would, you know, would match that. And essentially, they're going to function as apartments even though the classification is multifamily. And I think as much as we can, you know, for, as we continue the conversation, like I said, the applicants do feel like this parking, obviously, they're running this business. They wouldn't want to do something that's going to negatively impact their ability to serve patrons or have people not want to come because there's not enough parking, right? And so, over their last 10 years of operation, they don't feel like that's, this rear parking lot has been fully utilized. They feel, like I said, parking, that folks park in municipal lots, they're on the street and kind of walk around, and so they don't feel like this is going to cause an issue for them to be able to serve the restaurant. We couldn't even provide some parking counts at different times of day to kind of share that information with you about how this is utilized now currently, if that's helpful.
So, David, you want to look at this as a modified site plan for this entity called Smoky Rock Barbecue and Apartments. The whole thing, and then we're going to modify that and look at it as one thing.
I think so. I think that's right. I mean, for starters, there's no, you know, there's no subdivision, there's no property right.
I'm not adding on to any...
Secondly, they're obviously altering what could only be considered the site plan for the restaurant by expanding the parking there, so I don't see any sort of a segmentation to the site plan that makes any sense. By the way, I mean, I can be talked out of this, and like I said, it's not my call anyway. It's the CEO's call, so that's a... And I haven't heard from either of them, as Ryan explained, so that's a conversation that hasn't happened yet, but that's, if you were to ask me right now, that's the way I would interpret it. But I want to circle, but what is striking to me here is that, I mean, the village obviously has needs, wants to expand its businesses, but has only a certain amount of parking and somewhat relying on centralized municipal parking. The question becomes at some point, if there's an aggressive use of this lot and of others, are we starting to create a fiction that the money actually goes ahead and alleviates the parking? Is there any?
It doesn't. It doesn't. We don't have, we don't have any parking in the village.
That, I mean, I don't want to prejudge anything, but what I'm processing in real time is whether that becomes a seeker issue. How can, you know, this applicant say, you know, "Why don't you hang us up on something that's for the village as a whole?" Then, on the other hand, that's what seeker is actually, is an impact of a project in this context, it's the impact of a project on the community. And so, I'm processing right now, that's where this thing comes out. We have to have a conversation with the village board or with CEOs, whether this is even meaningful, whether we need to amend the code, you know, how that, how all that works. But that's only for us.
So, it's left to wait for you to talk to Ken. Ken, are there questions from the board?
We just went through a long exercise, comprehensive plan adopted. That's village policy now, and it looked extensively at village-wide parking impacts and came to the conclusion that we have over 1,000 spaces within a block of the main intersection, that if you do detailed parking surveys, which we did as part of the plan, that there's always spaces available, and we don't have to assume that, you know, if we expand a business, we have to add, you know...
So, there's only spaces, I mean, you said there's only spaces available?
There's adequate spaces available.
Okay, so...
We never found more than like 68% of the parking on an average day, not in a, you know, the biggest day of the year.
With practical walking distance.
But on an average Saturday and Sunday in May or June, it was always parking available. You have to walk, I have to walk or something, but you can always find parking spaces.
Okay.
So, I don't think myself that there's a parking crunch that these 15 spaces are going to cause a problem. On the other hand, the code does say that we have to, if we're going to do a fee and lieu, that we have to, it can only be implemented when all other reasonable options are exhausted. So, I think we, as a board, to be consistent with the code, should look at all reasonable options to add additional parking on this site if as possible. And there is. I mean, you could add at least two new spaces without a lot of difficulty.
How did you take out this rest of the patio?
Yeah, they have a front patio, which is what they use the patio for.
Okay.
They don't necessarily, in my opinion, need that little bit of a rear patio. They could max out the parking in this back, and then you'd be less aggressive use of the parking in lieu. And we would, I would feel better about saying, "Okay, we can live with 12 parking in lieu spaces rather than 14," saying.
Okay.
That's a reasonable argument to make, and it's consistent with how the code comes out, I think, and how the plan describes parking as a whole in the village. So, that would be one solution that I think would be a reasonable place to come down on, and that we have two more spaces. You lose that one tree. You lose a little bit of the back parking patio, which doesn't seem to have much of a function. It's primarily a web of sidewalks.
It's a bit dangerous.
But you can clarify to me if there's something I'm saying that's forgetting something.
No, I mean, I see your point, and I think it is a trade-off that we considered, right, with this site plan in terms of, yes, that would reduce our number of spaces, but we felt that it wasn't reasonable or desirable. I think, A, because we are trying to create a bit of an entrance back here, right? And that is the side that most folks kind of walk down because it's closer to the main intersection, so they are coming down that side. So, there was some desire to retain some kind of entrance to the restaurant back there because otherwise you're kind of walking in a parking lot. The access to their propane tank that's stored underground is right above, is right under that portion of the patio. And then, like I mentioned before, there's two trees there that are relatively mature that do provide kind of some separation between this building and the park, between the restaurant and the parking. And as much as possible, we're trying to retain trees on this site. So, I think for those reasons, I'm looking at the two spots that would be gained versus those things lost. It's the desire for property. The propane tanks are, if you go to one, I think we showed another of the utilities that we didn't show yet, the manholes.
Totally manholes.
Sean, you're proposing, as a suggestion, two more spaces here.
Yes.
Which would eliminate one tree.
Yes. And you could do something else in terms of accentuating the entrance. You could have a tallest walkway, or you could have some sort of screening that created a nice entrance that was separate from the parking more so than... I see, you know, three different sidewalks, which I'm not sure exactly...
We have to have an ADA ramp back there.
I know that, yeah.
Oh, you can see the holes to the propane if you go to the right a little bit. So, does it...
So, you'd have to move the propane tanks. Where are they?
Those two S's.
Two S's, two S's.
Yeah.
Are they buried tanks?
It's a buried tank, yeah.
Sean, why would the two extra spaces only take out one tree? I'm looking at both trees sort of being the way there.
I would agree. Both trees would probably have to go.
I would like to see it scaled out, but I don't think it has to.
I think, I think the answer to that is that in the proposed, in the proposed solution, if we can get to this. if we can get to this. Move this over.
You could put the handicap aisle next to that second tree and therefore I don't think it would infringe on the parking spaces itself.
So I think the answer to David's question was, in the proposed solution, you've actually moved, even though you've allowed 24 feet, you've moved something back here? So in other words, in the original one.
Bigger aisle.
We lose a bigger aisle, we were able to keep everything the same.
So one, two spaces here.
Yeah, and then the aisle would be closest to the building, the handicap space in the aisle. And therefore that could, I think, save that second tree. So you'd still have some screening element. Did you look at that as an option and scale it up to see if it could work?
We can look at it as an option. I, I, I think, you know, we can look at that as an option. Um, I think the rest of, of kind of what I said in terms of the argument of the value, the value gained versus the value lost, um, still stands, but I think we can, we can look at that.
Remind me again of why the entrance is in the rear because it doesn't make any sense.
Um, it's SLA liquor authority regulation that you have to be a certain distance from.
Church.
The church.
Across the street.
Not from the package.
Yeah.
It has to be 100 feet from the church or something, it's state law.
Yeah, so it has to be the rear of the building.
The front entrance would need to be by across the street from the church. I mean, uh.
Even though they're serving drinks out on the patio, where does?
It's the entrance to the.
Where does the entrance have any effect on the drinking?
It's the law. The law is, yeah, the law is 100 years old. And, and they try to stretch the law by, um, you have to serve drinks on premises. When we had COVID, they tried to have tables outside and you had to figure out how to get and bypass the SLA's rules about. And I think the governor made such flexible things there because if you're not serving drinks, then you're establishing a liquor license to serve drinks outside to the public because you're not. Yeah, when you pass the beer place, people are standing on the sidewalk drinking beer. And so I don't know, it's, it's very.
I agree, it's wacky.
We still, we still, I don't know how far we could beat this to death yet until we get a ruling from Ken and David, how they feel about this, but.
I mean, the board can also consider tonight the architectural items with the renderings and things like that.
Yeah, let's move on to that because.
Just one, just one, just one other observation that as John pointed out, um, with the code, it's as if it's incumbent that we ensure that no other possible options were examined to satisfy it. And one thing that came up very briefly, and I'll bring it up because this could be an option, albeit extreme, would be to put three units instead of four there.
Yeah, um.
Which I suspect you don't find as appealing as John suggested to add the two.
I think we, I think we can have responses to both of those about, I think, why we feel they're not reasonable, you know? But I think we can, I think it, in terms of the due diligence, let's go through the exercise and, yeah.
Just the due diligence.
There's a trade-off between housing and parking. I would go for the housing.
Uh, we need housing, there's no doubt about that. There's no doubt.
One other quick related question, you mentioned you were going to update the delineation on the wetland. That was his process, has that been done?
Yeah, we're still, I mean, we're waiting on responses from DEC. So, um, we have a wetland specialist who reached out, believes it's DEC, um, and we're just now waiting for that agency to.
It's flat for a while behind the villages, but I don't know how far you can go. And then it drops off, you know, into the bog turtles out of the bottom there. But how do we, you know?
Well, that's why I asked, because if, if the delineation changes in their favor or against their favor, this building may need to come forward or could potentially be pushed back for a bit, which may create more room for a parking space or.
We don't believe it'll need to come forward. We've, we've kind of used the 100-foot buffer, so we don't believe it would need to have, we've kind of gone right up against the buffer. As much as we can.
It must be malicious changes though.
Unless the, well, I think we have.
I believe the delineation was confirmed.
We have the wetland, it's the jurisdiction. We have the wetland delineated and now we're just figuring out.
Army Corps of Engineers or DEC.
Yeah.
And then further back you go, you might have to have some.
Well, if it's the Army Corps, you don't need any.
Exactly, exactly.
It looks like you have 100 feet or so, so you could push the building back to your 100-foot boundary.
Maybe you think there's space to push back, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's 100 foot here.
Oh, it is.
This four foot, is that delineating between the opposite of the building and where the, um?
That's a cantilever.
Just the 100.
The arch line is the 100-foot buffer.
Okay.
What's that?
The arch line is the 100-foot buffer line. Yeah, that's it.
If you go too far back.
But it seems like you could push the building back a little bit more too.
Is there any danger of too far back? You have to put in some pilings and stuff to?
I mean, preliminary conversations yield a pile structure regardless, just give them the corner of the slow back there. But I, I totally agree, if we could get more space, it might be to our benefit. But at the same time, if you walk back there, it goes off really quick.
Really quick, yeah.
So, so I don't know what flexibility we have regardless of the 100-foot barrier because it's, it's tight. Just in terms of excess excavation, all of.
It could be three or four feet because that could grow that island back, that landscaped island.
We want to talk about the new design of the building.
Yeah, so it's in the same set, if you just zoom out and scroll down, um, we put the elevations in the same set.
And a rendition at the end.
A rendition.
Yeah, the renditions.
So. How high up is that secondary cordeus there? Because it looks to me like that might be the way of your garbage truck.
So that floor level is seven and a half feet, so that, the bottom is going to be eight and a half feet.
So that, a truck would clip that going around the corner, I would say.
It's a reasonable point. It's a reasonable point.
I like the idea of having a separation and on a three-story building, it's nice. But you might have to do it, like I said, if you get that extra three feet, you might be able to play with something like that. But as it is now, I think you, you risk being.
It's a reasonable point.
But you showed the garbage truck going back in there, constantly passing that thing and going into the corner. Um, I assume they have one of the front loaders that pick it up from the front and throw it over its back and then keep going instead of trying to back into the dumpster.
I think that's what we modeled as a.
Right, it's front loader.
What's the width of the garage doors on this?
Oh, I believe those are eight feet wide and seven feet tall. I believe so. Don't quote me on that.
It's tight.
So. Oh, the whole thing is tight. It's a 30 by 60 volume with four parking spots, minimum.
Right.
So that really drives a lot of what's going on. And even if we go to three, the footprint is the footprint is the footprint.
What's floor-to-floor height?
Well, at the moment, it's seven and a half, eight, seven and a half. And seven and a half is the top nailer. And the, the dormers actually give us the ability to move up and down a little bit. It's the old trick where you get more height in the, in the upper store line cutting into the roof structure. So the dormers, you know, provide a little bit of flexibility for you to move up and down. Um, because ultimately, the issue with this is we have to work within the footprint. We have to have parking on the lowest level and it's essentially a 35-foot extrusion. So how that looks as you're driving by, being in scale with the appearance of the front of the Smoky Rock building is sort of a big thing, one, two, contextual. So that's where the gables come in. I think that we were inspired by these flush gables that exist everywhere, uh, dormer gables, excuse me. Um, and I think the other thing too is it just speaks to the fact that there are four units. We've come up with a couple of ideas, we brought some, if you want to see other elevations. But ultimately, on the comment last time about a straight edge, I think that we are kind of of the opinion that we have to have some variety of this piece here. We looked at two, sorry.
I'll get them all out.
Apologies.
Excited about my presentations.
We can share.
While we're looking at that, perhaps another reason for that four foot in the back is the fact that there are rear ground-level entrances exiting through that.
Certainly, but you can.
It's also the deck.
Have a gravel path on the 100-foot wetland buffer, but you can't have a building.
So ultimately, we thought this was slightly a lot, a long edge and we wanted to break it up. So that led to other studies, some about sort of changing material on the gables, whether we add some freeze boards across here to break the floor stories up. So contextual, we, we took from the last meeting that we needed to, you know, make this more contextual. So that was the effort. But I think the gable, the, um, front gable dormers is an element that occurs all over the place in the village and I think is acceptable here. It works, I think, contextually, seeing along the street, sitting in the back.
I don't know, I mean, the, the front building, the historic building on this property is in the historic district. It's a bit of that building anomaly in the front. That's an Italianate building. And this doesn't read Italianate at all. It looks like a whole different vocabulary. And it seems to me you should do something that is compatible with the existing building so it looks like a carriage house for the front building. And so an Italianate roofline seems to be more in keeping. And also, I would suggest a three-story building, I, I think a three-story building is appropriate. You know, you want to, uh, because you have to have the ground for garages. Um, you want to have decent-sized apartments, but, um, a two-and-a-half-story building would look better than a three-story building because it's supposed to be a subsidiary or accessory building to the front building. And the front building's only a two-story building. So if you didn't make it into a two-story building with real dormers rather than, you know, sort of roofline fake dormers, which is what I feel this looks like.
Okay.
Um, then you, you would bring it down to scale a little bit and try to read off the, the main building rather than saying, well, we have gable buildings all over the village, we'll do that. Whereas this is, really should be a subset of the front building more than anything. So I would look at the window types and the, the style points, um, from the front building rather than from buildings all over the village.
Can you scroll down to the front building?
Yeah, I mean, I think the other thing just to add that, John, is that typically the rear buildings, in my opinion, have less detail than the front buildings. So carriage houses, garages typically don't have brackets and things.
No, no, I'm, I'm not suggesting brackets, but you know, like the roofline, it's shallower roofline rather than.
Yeah, not, not.
High, high-pitched gables and things like that. You can see it here to there, you know, how that one, the pitch lines don't line up, it's, you know.
I mean, the arch windows are beautiful.
Yeah.
You know, if you took these two windows in the back and maybe on the top floor, put them together and had two rounded, like, combination or even on the side there, you know, each one has a rounded one there, it would be a, you know, a tie-in between the back, new building.
You mean?
Take those two top windows, put it together and each one have a, you know, an arch head circle.
And lower the gables.
Add another.
With the top floor, I'd always not have a ceiling on the top floor.
Correct.
So, and that gives you the height you're looking for without the height of the building, I mean.
Yeah, so that's the justification for it, yes.
Not on a ceiling, it makes it, you know, people like that, they, you know, 12 foot, or in the center anyway. But a lot of houses are like that. When it comes down to the walls, it gets pretty low, but in the center, it's high.
Sure.
And it gives a feeling of that height and space.
Yeah, I mean, I think I would agree with what John and Michael had said, but I'm also cautious about all of those statements. The height one is, is pretty straightforward, right? It's a, it's a secondary building to the Italianate restaurant building. I agree that a secondary building should also have less detailing, but it should be inspired by or feel appropriate with the primary building. Um, so I'm optimistic that you said that and we're not going to see too many brackets and something, you know, trying to be more fancy than it should. Um, I'm also a little bit worried about things like arched windows though, because for me, the thing that works about those arched windows is, is how skinny they are, right? The, the fear I have is that we end up with, you know, modern colonial suburban arched windows at the width of the window and that is a completely different design language. And I worry just for practicality's sake, those are apartments and I assume those are designed to bring lots of light into probably a bathroom and a bedroom and each unit or something along those lines. So you're going to have a pretty big compromise in terms of, of light coming in if we go too small. So I, I, I'm not disagreeing with Michael, I'm just cautioning or worried that, you know, or trying to make the point that I don't, I don't think we're insisting on any particular thing for the sake of insisting on it. I think it's what works with the architecture. And we realize that there's probably some compromise based on what will work for the units. Um, I think the mistake we could make here is, is trying to make something look like it's 150 years old and have it not pull it off, right? So that doesn't mean it can't be beautiful and detailed and have like real thought and attention, but, um, we're not trying to like do Disney World here necessarily.
And this is very, very far from around night and well hidden by the restaurant. So I mean, it's not like it's on around night where everyone's going to see it going by.
Well, there's actually, you know, the sightline's interesting. I mean, the renderings you provide, there's, there's an interesting moment of sightline and.
The other one is from West Market as well, because it's going to offer a very significant face, you know, to the bagel shop across the antique shop.
And that was going to be my, my next point is that's a, that's a big facade. These are all big facades, but especially that one, right? So the treatment of the siding all the way down the edge of the foundation, you know, that's a big, big blank heavy wall. So if anything can be done to soften that, I think it would, it would help. I don't know what that answer is. Um. Maybe just landscaping. Maybe it's landscaping, maybe it's a, you know, it's a bonus window for that particular unit. There's just, there's something to soften, you know, three stories of, of siding material there because, you know, it is the village center and, you know, in an ideal world, this would somehow participate with the M&amp;T Bank parking lot if there would be some sort of corridor or some sort of connection.
Well, it becomes a plug, it becomes a plug visually, you know, one way and the other. It's like Mira does and other things do, so understood, understood heat on it.
Yeah, and then sort of tying into that thought about how it relates to the surroundings. You know, John's point about maximizing, maximizing parking is a really good one, trying to find another spot or two on the site. But what I heard also is that we could potentially lose two trees. One of those trees does a really good job of blocking this building from Route 9, right?
On the south side.
On the south side, you get a nice glimpse through the tree at the building. So there would want to be some sort of mitigation if we take that away. But two, it, it just brought up the thought, listening to all this tonight, and that this is, that is also, that courtyard is the front yard for these residents too, right? So absent that courtyard in the back of the restaurant, which I understand is no longer really used for the restaurant, they don't have much in the way of green space outside their door. So I just, as we trade off parking and courtyard, it seems worth considering what these people get to experience on a daily basis as they come in and out of their house, right? Without anything there, you know, whether it's trees or not.
That's a good point.
It's just, it's parking and building and it's a, it's a different experience of living in that kind of space than maybe as shown today.
In that vein, could I ask, um, that corridor in the front, it's supposed to be 24 feet wide, right?
Between the building and the garage aisle, it's 24 feet.
Yeah, as I look at that, um, that's not the way, and maybe just the angle or the perspective, I want to show that. That, it doesn't look like that to me because it looks basically.
That may be our Photoshop, sir, like we, this is.
No, no, but I'm just, I'm mentioning this because if the board is going to evaluate what Darren was just speaking about, which is the, the treatment, the feeling of their front, their, you know, their front door and that, that corridor, as you put it, I think the visual is going to be that that, that pavement in front of those, um, garages is going to be, and actually it has to be significantly wider than what the proper seating, that, that looks like it's 10 feet.
It is, it's because you're trying to transpose the proposed rendering onto the existing.
I'm not, I'm not, so you don't, I don't, whatever, I'm just saying.
There's going to be more asphalt.
It's going to look like a lot of asphalt.
But, and that, that's my final question and that's why I asked about the width of the garage doors. Um, we do this circulation analysis of, of the garbage.
Yeah.
But with an eight-foot wide garbage, with an eight-foot wide garage door, right? Backing out of that into the 24-foot D's corridor is also a pretty tight maneuver depending on what vehicle people have. So just something seemingly worth considering today. We've gone to the code requirement of 24 feet, but if all of a sudden we have residents that can't stop crashing into the side of their garage door, um, or on way in or out, we might have a problem.
That's what first prompted me to question that because I wouldn't want to back out until I don't connect there, just it's not, you couldn't do it.
Is it possible to think of the other side, the west side, as being the front of the house? Front of the building? So that it opens up on that beautiful view of, of the woods and the wetlands.
Certainly, yeah.
I don't know how you can do it and still maintain your buffer, but hopefully if it's a, a federal wetland instead of a state wetland, you've got a little more freedom back there.
Well, that and then the, the access around the building is tight, you know, because we only have the five feet on the one side and then you have the garage, or you have the rectuse container. So there is those, there is those emergency exits. So there is those, there is those emergency exits kind of on the back. And so people could go out into their, that backyard space and maybe have a chair out there and have that view.
Also, you know, that balcony.
And the balcony.
Exactly. And then the balcony is where you get that kind of view into that space, kind of hanging over that one.
I know the client's also concerned a little bit about activities back there projecting onto Mirabeau as well. So I don't think they want to push, I mean, it's going to be, designers tend to not push too much activity back there, keep the deck small, et cetera, to not have so much presence back there.
The other thing that I particularly don't like about this arrangement is the repetitive nature of it. It seems to me if we're thinking of this as more of a carriage house rather than the four apartments, in terms of the architectural statement, you know, not only the four peaks, but also the four doors, the regular pattern of the doors and the windows. It seems to me you could vary the doors and the garage doors, put two different doors in the middle and two on the outside edge, rather than having door, 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 you know, in a repetitive fashion. And you could also do the same thing in the window pattern. Say have the center bay of that be a different window, you know, with maybe an arch at the top or something, you know, so you have one accent window instead of trying to make eight arched windows. And do something that's sort of, because that's what I, when I think of carriage houses in the village, I think of, you know, it has the garage doors on the first, but the upper floors are one big space. And it should maybe read like that from the outside to a certain degree, rather than, you know, carving it up into these very narrow bays. Just some thoughts.
I mean, as a multifamily building, I haven't thought this through, so I'm just going to sort of say it, but is there an obligation for each unit to have a specific garage space under it? Or can this be constructed in such a way that the garage space is the entirety of the building? Maybe the doors can be ganged together. You don't necessarily have to have, I suppose it would be less desirable, a fully private garage, but they're not particularly large to begin with. So are we bound by the columnar nature of these units all the way down to the ground?
Have firewalls between the rooms?
Yeah, we did, we did try to investigate that to reduce the number of doors and stuff. I think it was both fire code and layout, but also a desire of not having that headache of trying to manage parking spaces amongst, right, like having, having your own kind of dedicated parking space.
Ten and three parks appropriate.
Yeah, yeah.
You could definitely fit the parking there in another way. But where we started was with two singular openings or one singular opening, larger garage door openings. Maybe we go back and take a look at that, but ultimately we thought that the openings were too large, the scale was off, et cetera. Client's desire as well was to have compartmentalized spaces. I think that's their sensibility. But I totally understand your comments about the door openings. I just, I'm not sure where one measures the efficiency in the open space. Because then you're, you then go to a centralized corridor system, right, to get circulation amongst the apartments. We had stairways on the back, stairways on the front. So I don't disagree that there are other ways, but I think in terms of the elegance of four units, individual entries kind of makes sense with the overall plan because then we're getting into hallways and corridors, we're losing space to that on the over floors.
And now his points about...
If you have two doors on the front side instead of four, we're ganged with a, like a little vegetable to get you into the garage. Now, I'm not sure there's enough, I haven't seen the floor plans enough, there's enough space to do that, but anything that would, I think, you know, interrupt that.
The end units potentially could be entered from the other sides of the building. But I know you're thinking about it as sort of a loop around the building, possible for all tenants, but I wonder if the two end units, their doors weren't just right around the corner, if there would be a big impact to them if the public were all by their front entry. Just to John's point, it's a way to reduce the rhythm a little bit.
I'm an architect, but looking at two and six, with the shakes above the clavits, it seems to pull the building down and make it look smaller. To my eye, not making an architect, this thing, this seems to pull down as it breaks up, a big flat surface going all the way to the top, like cutting it off here and here.
Certainly a change in materials like that.
A change in material like that seems to, to my eye draws the town.
So that, because you have...
Pulling it towards down.
Reduce the scale of the building.
It's just more craftsmanship and detail. It doesn't have the same connectivity to...
Right, it doesn't go all the way up to the peak of the clavits. It seems to pull the building down. I think, yeah, I think we, I'd like to, yeah, I think we've come up, I think, a good distance today, but we really need to wait, we need for Louis from town to be classified and to come back. We've got some opinions for you.
Well, I mean, I guess I would ask the question, I feel like we've submitted all the information that we can to deem the application complete. So I was, I guess that was a question from the board. If, I know there's still determination that needs to be in terms of like what the route is for parking, but we feel like we have a complete application. So I was wondering if we could do that and at the same time start circulation and start getting comments from 239M, from the county.
Why would we need to go to the county?
I was just reading through your site plan code and it said it had to go to the county.
It's residential.
Okay.
Multifamily? Is example?
It's not the example. Anything residential that I've kicked to them, they say we don't want...
Even if it's special permit?
I can check with...
Yeah, just double check.
Them again. Being also a special per permit, this board needs to decide when they want to schedule a public hearing. I don't know if you guys are ready tonight, ready to do that tonight and start the process at the November 5 meeting or based on your feedback to them, see what they come back with, and then schedule it next time. That's up to you guys tonight.
What is the timeline, do you think, for Justin and Ken to make this determination on the parking?
I don't, not having them there, not knowing David's schedule, I don't want to make any assumptions.
We need an answer by...
Well, of course, we need an answer by November 5, but I can't...
It's a three-week gap now.
Correct.
We've got to be able to get together, get an answer to everybody in three weeks.
I mean, because they have a complete application at this point, I feel, you know, there may be some revisions forthcoming. So to deny the setting of the public hearing, but I don't want to set it if we're not going to have the parking answer because that's one of the fundamental questions.
I could only imply so much pressure.
We have to vote on, I could call Ken or Justin, I'm the chair. And we need this, we've got three weeks, we've got to get together with them to give us the answer.
If you want to throw your weight around, Sharon, go right ahead.
Yes, absolutely. But, because we need an answer, but do we, we have to vote on a public hearing. If we don't vote tonight a public hearing, we can't have a public hearing on Election Day because...
No, you would vote then for the next meeting in November, which is, hold on, November...
Would you?
November 19.
Yeah, we're at the point of wanting to get as much feedback on it as...
It's why we can't schedule a public hearing and assume that we're having that answer beforehand and that they will come back with some alternative options. And we'll get some public feedback on it.
Oh, yeah. I don't have a choice.
And everybody be here because they're all voting, we're not going to have an answer until Thanksgiving, so take it, come to the public hearing and not worry about the election or missing anything.
So I'll put a little asterisk on that.
Okay.
If the county does want to do a full review on this, just if you guys vote tonight, there's that week before. So all the neighbors are notified. And if they plan to show up November 5, but Dutchess County planning says, "Sorry, we can't give you an answer by November 5."
Well, we can still have, we can just continue the public hearing.
Okay.
Let's get started.
If we schedule a public hearing, it'll put a little pressure on both parties.
Sure.
Okay. I'll talk to Ken.
I'll pretend that I'm sure.
I'll make motion to have a public hearing at the next meeting, on the special permit inside plan.
Second, if you favor, aye. Okay, we, I think we've made good progress.
Yeah.
Three times.
Thank you.
Second, I, I can just, one, one capital mistake. So the ZB A back.
It is.
And they approved the issues with the... So we're here, we're back here now because we have to find approval. Some people have concerns about this. Thank you, Dave, and you.
There were a few comments made at the last meeting where we looked at the design drawing. And one of them, I think there was a request that the maximum and average height of both the accessory structure and the central door be noted in the drawing that is on the current drawing set.
And that's the 349 that peeks out at, yeah, correct, yeah.
Well, the averaging edge is, right, but the, yeah, right. The, and there was a net request that the pool barrier gate compliance in your state building code be noted on that, the architectural site plan, that's on there. Blue stone sidewalk along the street, along the sidewalk in front of the house, that's been noted. And the zoning compliance table, yes, but it's actually on the engineer's site plan. I didn't want to duplicate it and like that, but so I think we addressed, that was the June 18 meeting, those comments were made, so I think we addressed all of those. Happy to review anything else if you have any questions at this point.
The only other thing we talked about was, you have a site plan and Mark Reminski has a site plan, which is mainly the septic plan, and his has some less refined details. He has a riprap channel and things.
We added landscaping.
So you added landscaping on yours, and we talked about just a note that would say, with respect to landscape details, this would trump that.
Yeah, I mean, they, they both are effective. If you approve it, both of those, I guess, what's included on both of those need to be included, but I can certainly add a note that says, you know, cross-reference from everything that works.
Yeah, I think the concern was that if someone were to only look at Mark's plan for compliance on the landscape side of things, the site side of things, they would miss all the detail that got put in the plan.
Fair, right.
So just it was a simple move to say with respect to landscape.
Does anybody else have comments about compliance?
I wasn't here for almost all of the discussion of this because I was gone for summer vacation. So I just have a couple of questions, just for clarification. What's the square footage of the house?
That should be on my cover sheet. I didn't print out that again here. This, this is the engineer's site plan, but if you go through the architectural set, there's a site plan that has that all noted on there.
Which, which is these?
Jeff, you're looking in June, you've got to jump that to October.
I didn't want to make you... It's the first floor habit holder?
Yeah, there's like an office up there.
It's not letting water, so it doesn't need sprinklers on the third floor?
It does, it has a sprinkler. Yeah, a wood frame structure, that's three stories, you have to have sprinklers.
Okay, so it does. That was discussed, okay.
On October 1st?
Porch railings, to me, look strange. You know, you have round columns and square porch railings.
You have them being handrails going up the porch.
Yeah, a lot of handrails. It just seems out of character. One doesn't mix well with the other, and it's just...
You think maybe the balusters should be round?
No, not at all.
I'm trying to answer that question.
But it looks, the way they butt up against the column doesn't look right. So I'm not sure, I, you know, I, you know, would, like, iron railings be better? Because they would be, you know, less bulky.
So railings typically do, when they run between round columns, do kind of butt into the center of the columns? I mean, that's pretty standard to do. It's true that that only might be aluminum these days, it would be less bulky than wood.
Yeah.
The problem often is that they, they look and can feel that they're slimy, and I'm sure there are better quality street ones under double, and I certainly wouldn't rule that out. We have to have a handrail at the side of the steps.
Yes.
But...
I don't know. Does anybody else look at that and say that it looks a little odd?
I think what's odd is that it has handrails. I think we're maybe more accustomed to seeing porches that are closer to the ground that don't have the handrails.
And this is high enough that it has wood stairs.
People don't like them, but it's a nice safety thing to have there if it's slippery.
Maybe, you know, a rounded rail coming down.
The handrail.
Yeah, and a rounded post would be better, I don't know.
Or maybe no balusters or something where it just becomes less visible.
Balusters is not what bothers me, it's the post.
Might be more pictures.
And the way it butts up against the column, it just doesn't look right. It looks like, you know, two-by-fours added to, you know, a colonial structure.
You know, when you have a larger detail, you could probably have a shaped railing and it might not be round, it might actually have kind of a, you know, a shape on the top.
I'm not going to hold it up because of that, but I just...
But, yeah, I, we're not going to have to buy boards. I do tell you.
That's what this looks like.
Yeah, there's some further limitations, and when you make the drawing as small, it just becomes a lot of black lines, so you can't, don't do much.
So maybe it's softened up the railings.
Yeah.
The stone, is that going to look like fieldstone?
The intent would be natural stone, it might be an engineered, but it's not going to be a concrete pressed product.
Yeah, can you, can you make it look more like fieldstone even though if it's a veneer? So instead of like a large block?
They've placed real stone quite thin now, and it doesn't have to be turned on its vertical face. It could be layered, there are quite a few products.
Yeah, so the problem I have is with, I know, I know it's, is it in the historic district?
Yeah.
Yes. Stone either comes laid flat, which doesn't look real, or it doesn't have any bearing weight, you know, which looks awful. Or those little tiny thin stones that look like they're made out of chips and debris of stone or something. You want something that looks like real stone, that has a weight-bearing capacity to it. And unless you have that, it looks weird and right up front of the building.
My clients would certainly agree with that, and I do too, that it needs to look like it's legitimate.
Okay, so can we just agree as one of the conditions that we have, we're going to vote today, whatever, that the stone looks like? Absolutely. Fieldstone, that is the way to go with it, character of fieldstone.
And I think this came up briefly at some point in one of the meetings, too, was that, we talked about indigenous blue stone.
Great.
And then, by the way, William sells pallets of three-inch-thick blue stone, which we typically use for stone veneer. It works great. You apply it the normal way, it's just already been cut sort of in half, so you don't have to cut yourself. That's the easy...
Great, absolutely. And the last thing I want to say is, your neighbors both have street trees. It seems to me you should contribute a street tree to the tree, the street is part of this.
I don't think anyone has objected to that.
Yeah, there's a big tree just off the property to the south, so it would have to be close to the driveway, so it wouldn't, because that's a good-sized tree. But the neighbors have a smaller tree, so the neighbors to the north have a smaller tree, and it seems to me pick up something that starts to create that...
So you're making a tree between the driveway and the front steps?
Yes. Just one, because the other tree overhangs your property, this property. So if we could make some conditions that the stone looks like fieldstone.
Or issue.
Stacks, fieldstone.
Street tree.
The railings has rounded features to be compatible with the, with the rounded columns and that there's a street tree approved by the tree committee on the front of the property between the sidewalk and the curb.
Yes.
And nothing.
These are some, these are some photos from three or four meetings ago that we took on the UJIS of neighbors.
Yes.
Kick it fence there is a proper in question.
Yes, you can see the shadow from the tree.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's in front of their house.
At the neighborhood sound. That was a square handrail.
But they have a square, but that has sort of that period.
It's got the period, right? It does have rounded columns, right?
So those are my three points.
No doubt.
Railings, stone base with a porch, street tree.
Yes.
And the one prior to that was just a note on the plan that the landscape details from the architectural set would trump engineering drawings.
Right.
So engineering drawings will say or refer to architectural plans for landscape details. And then you proceed.
Someone like to make a motion to approve the site plan with 37 Mill Berry Street as special use permit?
I'll make it. Aaron?
With those four conditions. I'll second the motion, Ken.
What was in paint, or, I think, a hide. Could we let one?
Thank you.
It's nice to see a house come back to that lot. It's nice to see a house come back to that lot.
Yeah, I agree.
Don't let it paint in black. Okay, sixty-three, sixty-three Mill Street. Secret house, give me an idea, thanks.
We have some samples here for the colors and, you, there's essentially three colors. This is the...
It's medicine.
And the third color is the window.
Oh, Marvin, I saw the specs for the windows, is this, which is the front of this?
This is just for color.
Oh, just for color?
Right, it was indicated in the, in the, it's the middle, that it will be smooth side out and a six-inch exposure.
Gray, does this building have shutter?
Just, yeah, what's, I should look at the tonic down a little bit, actually the red and, and the, the, in the field, this matches the greenish tint of the building the most.
This one?
That would be the trim color.
Okay. And the trim, the model of the siding is?
This is the trim color, the darker.
Your hands on the siding.
Yep.
It's pre, pre-colored.
The third color on the building is really the window color, which is repeated, normally in that front, trimmed, that ornate scroll work that's on the front porch, and so that's, those are the three colors, and they added another one.
So is the scroll work gonna be accented in a different color? Is that scroll work a fancy work around the front?
Yes, that's for the setting, right.
So that'll stay a, an accent color?
Yes.
Different from the siding or the trim?
Right.
Because that's pretty attractive, I think.
I agree, yeah, yeah. We thought about keeping, actually the only place the siding is in, is in good condition is under the front porch, and we thought of keeping that, but we, we just wanna insulate the place, and so, you know, that's gonna come out too. There's really not, you know, any, any siding, as you can see from the pictures, I don't know if you've been out there, but it's, the siding itself is a very poor shape.
Let us see from the pictures. Well, the Marvin windows look good, that's what we encourage. Smooth hardy wood is fine.
I couldn't get a sample from, I had to order a sample through them for the window color, because they only had one, and they wouldn't let me borrow it for the window, the actual window color, so I've got that coming, I just didn't buy it from Marvin.
I mean, I suppose I could start with just a couple of questions, so, just to be clear, the colors we have there, you're showing us a, a hardy sample, and that's a pre-colored piece, so that would be the exterior siding. You've given us the brochure, that would show us the Marvin window sash color. The darkest on the paint swatch there is your proposed trim color, your trim. And then, fourth color, I mean, correctly, are the scallops, which are currently yellow, and you're saying those would match the window sash.
See, on the right photo, the windows are painted that yellow color?
Right.
So what we're gonna match is the new window color?
Right, so the...
And that'll be the third color on the filigree.
So the Marvin color would be on the scallop.
Correct, that makes up the third element to that, the trim.
Right, so a three-color scheme, and we have all three colors there to look at. I suppose the, the one comment I have, or one caution I have is, I see the hardy called that as the siding, but then I see Versatech are equivalent as the trim material, so a PVC material. With the darker color scheme, though, that there's, might be a performance issue with that, right? So we've seen PVC failures in dark colors.
It's something to look at, but I don't, I don't think that's gonna be a problem, it's not that dark.
Okay.
And, you know, the, actually, I guess things change, but it's very shaded.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very shaded site.
It's a very shaded site, there's a very large mature trees around, but I don't see that as a, as an issue.
I mean, I know PVC, we allow a lot of it in historic applications, it, it tools nicely, you can make lots of profiles out of it.
I understand the...
But the concern is just the performance as it starts to twisting up, especially in darker colors. Maybe at a minimum, just some molecular modified paint, some that will not absorb the UVs to keep it from twisting and popping.
Totally got it, okay.
Just that we're ready to go this far and allow all this trim work, we just want it to hold up.
Well, the, really, we did it for the contrast. I have, I have some lighter colors that she was good with.
I'm not saying the pallets aren't good, I'm just saying...
You know, that was a little darker, we were looking at a little bit lighter earlier, but she preferred the contrast.
Understood, understood. So just wanted to make that point about the PVC. And then, right, so we saw the Marvin elevated windows, and we do show a simulated divided light, I know everyone's just gonna, just gonna bring that up. One thing I would just like to see is these photos, what we've asked in the past is that these photo documentation exhibits be put into the actual architectural plan set, so you don't need to draw them, but you have some photos in there already, just adding them into the set gives us the details to then look at when it comes time for CO, so when Justin goes out there, or someone goes out there to do the final inspection, they have the reference photos with the tape measure, so they can confirm that those details are put back the way they are.
And all four elevations can be...
And all four elevations, which are sort of represented there, but then the, the tape measure on, on the trim details helps a lot, because...
Yeah, you prefer them on another large-scale sheet.
It's not even the scale, I mean, we can permit any size, but they've become part of the plan set, because the supplemental exhibits won't be in the hands of the building department, you won't be submitting those to the building department, and the building department will be the ones to do the final check. So they're part of that architectural set that they sign off on.
Sure.
And they have it all in one document, so when they go out and look at the details...
That's simple.
Yeah, because they'll be looking for things, recreation of all these historic details, right? Like we have some pretty pronounced window sills, and pretty specific arched windows and things like that.
The arched windows are not being replaced.
Right.
They're all gonna stay.
The point being that in the set, they'll have photos of them, and they could say, okay, right, I see, they weren't planning to change them on this plan, they look just like the ones that I've seen.
Well, I should submit, you know, the, the cover narrative, the brief description, and, and the photos, and have them attached to the plan, so that they would go together. But I can do that, I'll, I'll put the photos on a sheet and add the narrative as notes to the sheet.
And you had most of them already on your, on your cover sheet. But what happens, it'll be a year later, you know, maybe longer before you go get a CEO. And these other exhibits will fall by the wayside, and it'll just be what's in the building department's hands.
These are the photos from the prior meeting there, are these the ones you're asking for?
Well, those I think were already in the set, but those should certainly be there, plus the new submission with the tape measure, so, in the past...
Those are the ones we saw just moments ago.
Right.
I'll just put them on a large format like this, so it's one set.
And we've done that so that you don't have to draw every detail, it saves you drawing time, it saves your client money, but at the same time, we get the measurements so that we can look back and say, well, it showed us a six-inch, and today you have a six-inch that is to match.
While you got this photo up, the lattice work underneath the porch there, that's just kind of the cheapest typical Home Depot stuff. Normally, I think, architecturally for that time period, they would have ninety-degree tighter lattice work on there. That's just kind of what, my input on that. If the crown molding on the raking eaves, you know, I mean, these, these photos are taken from way down, if they're in good shape, you know, that, that needs to be preserved, and if, you know, you get up there and you find a rot on the end or anything, you know, they have to be replicated exactly like what's up there, so they don't just kind of disappear like Buddy Rogers' beautiful crown molding went in the dumpster, when I specifically said, that white stuff needs to stay.
Michael, I mean, in the past, we've done this a little bit with the site visitor, are you suggesting that you go out and, you're happy with the photos?
I'm happy with, you know...
But there should be a detailed shot of the, of the, the edge up there, the molding along the, the edge of the roof, so that we know that it's replicated or maintained.
And, and just to elaborate on that, you know, some of the issues that we've run into in the historic district have been, you know, the way things are done today versus the way they originally appeared on the house. So, assume you're doing CA for your client, you go out and check these things, but, you know, the knee-jerk today is, you know, when you buy the hardy siding, contractors will often buy the hardy trim, and those corner boards and snap-together pieces aren't exactly what this house originally had, and we have run into problems with projects in the village very recently, we've actually made them change out.
There really isn't that much trim, except, you know, we're looking at the siding, and the eaves and rakes, we were just gonna inspect them, if they're in good condition, paint in that color, if not, replacing them kind. So, and just, so we're not really looking to change that at all. I mean, some of the, you, you look at the, that large band above the, the decorative arches there, you know, that's, you know, essentially plywood, and it's, and it's been there a long time, and we're, we're not gonna, we're gonna leave that, all that decorative scroll work is gonna stay, and the eaves kinda stand alone, the eaves and rakes, the eaves are hidden by some builders that are suspect. So I suspect that possibly the, there, there might be some damage behind them, very likely.
No, it seems like the approach is thoughtful, and the intent is to capture the detailing, to recreate it or to keep it.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll measure it.
I think my point is also, it's not so much always about omission, it's also sometimes about what can be added unintentionally, right? Just, just a simple piece of trim where there wasn't one before, because, well, that's how you end your siding work nowadays type of thing. So we're looking at both the addition and the omission.
What we wanna caution against is the contractor doing, him doing stuff based on how they do business, rather than what's approved. And we've had that happen, and we were trying to...
Well, I know the contractor quite well, and I'll have a conversation with him.
That's what we're looking for, and we're also looking to put something on the site plan to guarantee that the...
There's, there's no monetary reason for him to do anything other than...
Wow.
You know, well, he knows that it's not hardy trim, it's, we're replicating it, but they're pretty narrow corners, you know, only two and a half inches, and they're cut back, so they're two inches and a half on each face.
Is this gonna be pre-painted?
Yes, pre-finished.
I was finding it, it needs an extra coat, or otherwise the seams just...
Yeah, the dent, mm-hmm.
So...
It's a lens how they hang it, yeah.
Yeah, you know, one extra coat on the, on the pre-finished siding make, pulls it all together, so that it, it feels like a, because otherwise, every, every joint looks like an edge, rather than a, a surface.
This is a very old house, we appreciate people making the effort to preserve it and protect it. It's unfortunate, I guess, I don't know who sold the land to the gas station years ago, but it's been there for a long time. That's on your historic register too.
History has probably lost the time, I have no idea how that happened.
I know, I know.
It's very unusual, but it's next to where new things, right?
And, and there's still reference to the gate on the agenda, are we talking about the gate tonight at all, or?
I'm just gonna bring that up to the board, then if the board votes tonight, you should exclude anything about a gate or a, a security gate, because you haven't seen anything, anything proposed.
Have you, you don't have anything new on the gate, no, no.
So it's separate.
It's not a...
It'd be separate?
That'd be completely separate issue.
You'd have to come back.
I think it's just gotta grow up at some point, but it's not something that we're pursuing, I said, I refer that to the fence gate company, to counsel them if that was appropriate, and don't do that as a separate issue, if it happens at all.
You're...
Well, it probably won't happen before the construction is done, because it's, then that's just another...
Yeah, it's another big depression.
It'll probably be, you know, anything, it'll be after the construction.
We understand you need the privacy, it's in a bad location with people coming in, coming out of the gas station, not knowing, you know, to identify the property.
Right, well, I think, just keep the driveway open after that, which is the biggest problem.
Is there any pumps? I asked that the last time, are heat pumps or main splits being utilized on this?
I, I spoke to the contractor about it, and he was speaking to a mechanical contractor who's getting her proposal, and I...
They have to be...
They, they were looking at this point, the siding's coming off, we would like the, the feeds for the compressors here.
Excellent.
So I spoke to him about it, and I imagine there'd be, I don't know if there'd be a separate permit, probably required when those are installed.
There's a mechanical permit.
A decision hasn't been made yet. I, we did, he did talk about chasing and putting in some pipings, so that, you know, feed those later. We're all gonna be, we're all mounted, because it's, you know, the way the place is built. The replacement windows, the interior is in great shape, and all the window trim and casing plasterwork is all gonna stay on the inside. Floors are actually pretty good, so...
So are they proceeding? Someone like to make a motion? All make the motion.
Okay, I'll second it, but can we make sure that on the site plan, there's a statement about the historic nature of this house, and then all the trim and the siding has to match the existing, all the...
The requesting times.
Yes, so we can put that note on the, on the plan set, so that if the contractor does something different, we can say you violated it.
When you said matching, you mean the exact color or the color that we...
Not the color.
The shape.
The word, the shape and profile, that's all, yeah.
And when you go for the mechanical permit, there's only the forceful who knows what we want, which would be to hide the line sets and put one set, or even in the back, you know, would be the best way to do it.
And we should just clarify on the, on the approval that the gate or any heat pumps have not been approved as part of this process.
Ken, Ken would discuss the heat pumps.
Yeah, I mean, other than, I mean, the heat pumps have to conform to the Vulcan area regulations, I don't know, it would be nice if they could be put in the backyard, that would be the preferred, but...
Or in a shielded location, but the whole house is shielded, so it's not like, it has to be in the backyard at this point, it just has to be...
Well, north side would probably be the best, best place.
What?
On the north side, I would think would be the best place for that.
Probably so, yeah.
Because the backyard is, you know, it's a nice yard.
Yeah.
And it's kind of shielded back, there's a lot of planting.
So John, you're seconding it with basically two conditions. One is that the plans talk about the historic nature of the house, and that the intention is to recreate or restore, and then, the thing that I had mentioned earlier was to add the photo documentation and notes to the plan, the specifics about that to the plan.
Understood.
I have additional one, a smooth side out with the...
Smooth side hardy, which the plans do reflect now, but not right.
I don't know the hardy, these colors on the plans are...
We, we don't have authority to tell you what color to have, we just make suggestions to try, you know, give you some advices to the way, you know, things would look.
Although, the coat doesn't prevent neon irritant.
Yes.
You know, polka dots and stripes, all those sorts of things, but in terms of actual colors, if it's not neon or...
Red and green.
Talon green or something, we don't have any authority.
Yeah, who's, who's not loved, red and green, who's not...
We just, we just have this thing going on with black, okay, it's black out, that's why I said to Warren, please don't paint it black.
I mean, along those lines, one other wish list item, just to put it out there for consideration, we can't ask you to do this, but is, you know, the windows that you've chosen are aluminum plating, exterior windows, which, you know, the, the smallest that the mullions, divisions of the lights are gonna be a seven-eighths of an inch, which is fairly chunky, we've approved them in the past, but when you look at the Marvin line, if you look at some of the wood options, wood exterior windows are a little different story, I know, but you can get more petite with that, so just looking at what the existing condition was here.
A two-inch vertical mullion.
They have a big thick vertical, right?
And then very narrow horizontals on the one pan.
Yeah.
So it's like a two over four.
Right.
Because they're unequal sash.
And it'll be, it'll be harder to sort of get the, the narrows with the aluminum plating, so there are other options in the Marvin line, they are, they're more pricey, they are wood exterior, so they do require more maintenance, but just something to consider if they haven't already been, ordered.
No, we hold off until then.
No, thank you.
But they're about to take it.
Yeah.
All right, so we have, we have a motion and a second. All is good favor?
Aye.
Good luck, and thank you so much for spending time and money on this, it's too bad no one can see it. Remember, a house took a hundred inch case, but it's done. My next best kept secret.
Can I, I'd like it.
All right, the next item is thirty-nine South Street, to build porch on the front, which it doesn't have now. This is Colin Crookshank's old house, it's next to Jeff, and they went to the ZBA and they approved it. All right, we got the variations.
I actually looked at that, the gas station house, I feel bad for me to, but I looked at that like a few years ago, it was like the sale just all like, I didn't have any interest in buying it, I had interest in seeing it.
Yeah.
It would be, it was a fantastic, beautiful, it's pretty awesome.
So, we've talked about this before, we made a positive recommendation to the ZBA, and a lot of angles of the front porch. The other one, I think, has all the pictures. I know this one does, you know, so that's what it looks today. And then this is one of the many variations of it. And there's almost no side yard next to the steps, you can tell you got a car in there.
Yeah. I don't know why the drawings don't show it, but that would be lattice work on the, yeah.
Like diagonal lattice work?
Probably, yeah, diagonal cedar lattice. I think one of the drawings had it on there, but I don't know why it's not...
If it's something you and Paul have talked about over the summer, if you ever sent to me, my son...
So, Michael probably recommended different lattice?
Yeah, you know, I think if, if there's a picture of the existing porch lattice, it's the same as that, just the tradition, yeah, it doesn't have, it's on the left side, on the right, but...
Is it squares or diamonds, the existing?
Um, it's squares.
Go with it.
Yeah, why don't we go with squares then? Yeah.
So, does anyone have a problem with this, like what we saw? Is it gonna prove it? Any comments? Things to add?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a couple questions. One of the materials on the porch are they wood?
All wood. Probably, well, the floorboards would definitely be tonne groove, hardwood, probably some type of PVC for like the fascia and columns, but all hardwoods, nothing, no azac, or not composite floor, maybe like that.
Now, what about the fourth column? We talked about that.
That has not been determined. So, my wife prefers three, I, to me, I have no preference. She likes the open view of the, just the three. I like the symmetry of four. When I look around in the village, I feel like I see four much more common, an occasional three, but...
Is the, in this photo, is this centered between the second and third column, this upright?
It would be centered, yeah, which the, the windows are gonna throw the visual of that off, but the...
That's one thing we talked about the last time.
Our windows were offset.
The windows, the windows aren't vertically centered above each other.
No. Oh, yeah, look at that. Yeah, if you were to, the, yeah, exactly, so it's, and it's crooked and missing a shutter sense.
And it almost looks like, not clear from the other drawings whether if you put a center column here, whether the column here would be short, long between columns?
Well, it obviously have to be centered between columns, whether it centers up on the windows or not, that's another question.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think that's the whole point, John.
Well, there's a world where you move the one to the right of the door over, so you...
Yeah.
Because the, the question would be, which master do you follow, the upper?
Yeah.
Where do you follow the upper window spacing for your four columns? Or do you follow what exists today, and just split the difference with that fourth column?
Yeah, but they'd also have to push the right side in a little bit.
The inside and the left side will be set in equal distance.
Right, they're gonna line up with the windows, one way or the other. Anyway, I don't know if anybody, I prefer four, but I, there are threes in the village, I've seen them with the low column in between, so I'm not gonna, if your wife prefers that, I'm...
I was hoping you guys would decide in that way, it's not today. Yeah, they, they maybe decide.
We understand.
I've seen historic examples of both, the four, the regular columns, it's much more difficult.
Yeah, I think I prefer the four for sure, and I also think I prefer the rhythm, following the rhythm of the second floor windows, because the first floor windows are gonna be hidden in the shadow lines of the porch, and I think it will help the elevation of the building. I understand John's point, you're not gonna be necessarily following the spacing of the windows, but you're going to have the same rhythm as those upper windows. So, even if the columns are inboard, I don't think it matters, as long as it has the rhythm of the upper, that would be my suggestion, I think it would, it would help the fun elevation, feel more, more right, and take your eye off the bottom windows not being cracked.
Yeah, would it, I guess the question would be, would it require a narrowing of the width, the overall width of the porch? And would it satisfy that criteria?
No, I don't think it does, 'cause you have the same symmetry left and right of the house, so it doesn't matter where it relates to each window, it just would follow the rhythm of the uppers rather than the lowers. So, it doesn't have a specific relationship up to how far or how close to the upper window it aligns, it just follows that rhythm of three, rather than the rhythm of three below.
But again, it's an old house, and the windows are long and different crooked, we don't wanna make it look like it was built yesterday, and it defeats the whole purpose.
Yeah, are you, you intending to keep the shutters on the bottom windows?
Um, so there is a, the current front porch, if you go to that picture, the roof, the angle doesn't really show it, but there's a, that lower section connects to the left side of the window, which prevents there being a shutter. Once that portion of the roof is removed, that gives us the ability to either add that second shutter, or just remove the shutters altogether, we'll probably add the second shutter to the left side of that window.
Okay, is there enough room?
There will be, yeah. From this angle, you can't really see, but there it is.
Now, I had, I had several additions there, that's my house, and I have places where there's one shutter, 'cause they built the addition and then there was no roof, so they threw the garbage.
So, I'm inclined to say, because we don't have the dimensions now, but assuming there's a shutter here, this column would almost be, in other words, it wouldn't be here. Your, your suggestion there, to have columns here.
Yeah.
Right? If that were the case, this column would be in front of the shutter, right? This column would be a little bit, so one scenario would be, when the applicant looks at the final dimensions and facade appearance, they decide whether to do three or four. And, because my, my fear is that if we say, you must put your columns based on the upper windows, we can't tell, but it might look awkward.
Because the upper and lower windows...
Yeah, I think that the dimensions of the porch are what's gonna determine the spacing of the columns. I don't think the window, I don't think it can be based on the windows, 'cause they're probably not in any way...
That's right. Yeah, yeah, and for you to fit that other column, in other words, it's going pretty close to the end of the house on both sides. This will be relatively wide, because of this, and then this would be relatively wide, and it might look, my, my suggestion.
And I'm not suggesting we make the, where the columns go, the condition by any means, I'm just offering an observation, that I think from the road, looking at the upper windows might potentially be the right move. You decide whether the lower windows or the upper windows are the correct ones to align with, but my gut is the shadow line on the porch is gonna hide the lower windows from sight, provided you're not putting a column right in front of a window at this point. But, I'm biased towards four, like John, but again, don't feel that strongly about it.
So, maybe we can approve it with three or four columns, and...
Yes.
And, determination that you made in the field.
Whatever they think is the most verbal summary.
Yeah, she's not here too, so that makes it even, you know, less...
All right, do we have a motion to approve the site plan for the front porch? With the condition that it's the discretion of the homeowner to decide whether they want three or four columns. I guess I just made the motion.
Okay. I'll second it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Great, thank you.
And we can confirm with you what's ultimately decided.
Yeah.
It would be, when the time comes, so that we have records in the village hall of the as-built, if you would provide that information.
Yeah.
Well, they should decide before he signs it.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Before he signs, yeah.
Thank you, sir, I am.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
We like front porches. We like front porches.
I had one, a giant front porch.
With your shutters?
Disappeared. And some shutters. The last item of the new business is seventy-seventy-two South Parsoness Street, and this is going to need six variances, this is gonna take some work here.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello.
My name is Rob DuPont, I'm the architect for the project. These are the property owners, this is Lindemizelli, Dan Leview, they own the property at seventy-seventy-two South Parsoness Street. This is our first time before the board, new business, and fortunately, we're not in a historic district, just in the residential district.
I'm sorry to interrupt, one more time, Rob DuPont, you're the architect.
Yes, sir.
And, Mizilli?
Lindem is Ellen.
Lindy Mizilli.
Linda.
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 Dendo.
Linda.
L-I-N-B-A.
Linda, yeah, it checks out.
That's, that's L-I-N-B-A.
Linda.
Mr. Leview?
It's Dan.
Dan Leview.
Dan Leview.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, where was it? So, we're located in the residential district. This property is a little less than eight thousand square feet, so it's a little bit undersized on what the zoning ordinance calls out, so it's a pre-existing, basically non-conforming lot. The lot has been in these folks' possession since nineteen ninety-three, mostly untouched. There are two buildings on the lot, one is single-family dwelling, which is close to Parsoness Street, it's only about twenty-five feet off. That building is about thirteen hundred square feet, it's a four-bedroom house, relatively small, cute house, and it was built in nineteen forty-two. The building in the back is actually, well, the site plan, and, yeah, there we go. So, what that shows to the right of the sheet, actually, I brought a laser.
Might not work on screen.
Oh, it doesn't work on screen?
Doesn't work on it?
Doesn't work on a digital screen.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, so that's why nobody brought a laser. The, there we go. So, that shows the property map. Parsoness Street to the right, you can zoom out just a little bit, so you can see Parsoness Street. There we go, okay. So, the house, obviously, is a structure that's right off the street, driveway is to the right. And then, all the way in the back of the property is, that's currently an accessory, it's called a cabin bungalow. It's been like that for as long as they've owned the property. It's not an accessory dwelling unit, it's basically, the previous owner had converted a garage into like a hobby shop office area, it's just a one-story building.
So, it's not a separate rental?
Correct.
It's just an accessory building used by the owners?
It's multi-owners.
So, it has no bathroom or kitchen?
It has a bathroom, it does not have a kitchen, so it doesn't qualify as a dwelling unit. And to be fair, these, when these, because the house is so small, when these folks have friends staying, they stay in it, okay? But it's not, for the most part, it's not occupied.
Right.
The, the sort of bump out, you know, north is straight up, so the sort of bump out to the right of that accessory building in the back, that was added on, again, I think in the early nineties, that's basically a storage shed, so a utility storage shed, also one-story. What these folks would like to do is, they love the property, but as, they'd like to age in place, they'd like to make it a little bit more commodious for themselves. With regards to the house, they'd like to, to create a two-story addition on the back of the house, that's shown in red, footprint on, in red right there. That's basically twenty feet out from the existing house, twenty-two foot eight wide, two-story. They're taking out two of the smaller bedrooms in the existing house to create a sitting area for themselves, and that two-story addition would be basement underneath for storage, first floor, basically a commodious bedroom suite for Linda, she's having more trouble with the stairs, and a second floor bedroom suite, similar, not exactly, their proposed plans are sketched, and they're also included in this submission, but similar layout upstairs for a more commodious area for either Dan's use or for guests' living to use.
And care taken when we get old.
No.
Yeah.
So, that's what the house addition is. With the, the rear building, they have no garage, and they would like to create a garage as well as improved storage and a workshop area for Dan's use. So, what they'd like to do is knock down that portion of the accessory building that is the one-story storage shed, and replace it with, it's basically, if that's a one-story building, replace it with a one and a half-story addition that will be a workshop up against the existing building, a car bay all the way to the north, which aligns with the driveway, okay? And then, above that would be utility storage and like tankery space as well. So, no dwelling, nothing like that, just utility space. The problem with the lot is, there are already several pre-existing conditions. By the way, I, in, back in March, I met with Ryan and with Ken to go over this first, to get their input on exactly what the process would be. And more recently, after the designs were, we come up with, we met with them again to formalize what we needed to do. But the property currently has several violations. Number one, it's an undersized lot, supposed to be eight thousand square feet, it's seventy-seven sixty-seven, I believe is what it is, it's about ninety-five percent of a legal lot. Number two, the existing house is already, already encroaches within the side yard setback. The front and side yard setbacks are ten, ten feet, I've drawn the building envelope there on all four sides. Front yard is twenty-five maximum, ten foot minimum, no issue with the front, it's the rear and the side yards that are the issue. So, with regards to the house, existing house already encroaches into the southern side yard setback. In fact, you can see a dimension string that says nine foot seven, that's to the house itself, but there's a side porch over there, uncovered deck that's, that projects six feet out, so it's within four feet of the property line already, okay? So, so that's a violation. And, and so we would need to get a variance, even though the building is existing, I was told, you know, by Ryan and Ken, that we'd need to get, no matter what we do, we'd need to get a side yard setback variance for that.
I don't see why.
That's, that's what they told us.
I mean, it's an open deck, it's not a porch deck, and it's pre-existing, non-conforming. Obviously, to do the red section there, if you're gonna break that ten-foot plane, then you give me the variance, but I can't see why you need...
I think that Ken attached that you're increasing its non-conformity.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Of the house, so that's one of the six variances.
What about the steps, they would be enough.
Right, well, currently, the steps, the steps turn around the back of the house, that's where the addition would go. So I basically extended the steps straight out the back. We would have been happy to avoid another variance, we were told that it wouldn't make a difference and the building would have to get one anyway, so that's why we just.
Well, a new building.
Existing building.
Yeah, it must go together.
Yeah, so that's number one. And that would be the only variance that we require for the house addition. With regards to the accessory building in the back, that already infringes on the same southern side yard setback. And again, the dimension is shown there at the back corner, two-point-three feet. So that would require an area variance, and it also encroaches into the rear yard setback. So that would require a third area variance for setback relief from the rear yard. The addition that we're showing in red does not extend as close to the rear yard as the current building, so the initial setback variance that the existing building would require would also cover that. However, by extending the building to the north, we're basically extending that, in order to extend it so that it works with the driveway and gives the space that they need for the workshop and the automobile, we would extend it to within three feet of the northern property line. So that is, as a result of the design, that would require a new side yard setback of seven feet relief from the ten-foot setback. Lastly, the lot coverage is exceeded.
Way over the lot coverage.
Yeah, well, right now, it's just under, I believe it's on the, it's on the site plan. I think it's twenty-eight point five or something percent.
Correct.
Thirty percent is the maximum. When we add the footprint change for both of those buildings, it pushes us into, I think it's forty-one point four, so we'd be seeking an eleven point four percent overage from lot coverage. That's everything that I came up with. Ken added an addition to that. You said that since it was already a non-conforming lot, this would be, was it, Ryan, an extension of a non-conforming lot would also require another one?
You're also, it's just another increase to an existing legal non-conforming.
So that one I didn't really understand, but that's why I wanted to meet with Ken so he could.
Because in the section of non-conforming, it not only applies to structures, it applies to lots and uses. So not only are you increasing the non-conformity of the main house, or the accessory house, but you're also increasing the non-conformity of the lot itself, looking at it as one large lot. Well, not large lot, but one lot as a whole. So that's.
There's two sections of the code, you could talk about side yard setbacks. And so you gotta have to, even though it's one building, it has to have two variances. I think that's the way.
That's the way it's been.
You could remedy some of those by pushing the addition back, so it's not in line with the plane of the building on the south side. You know, we need a few feet, you know?
I think we had talked about that, Rob, their septic. They run into their septic, I don't think.
I know.
No, you're talking about the house, right?
Scroll up a little bit.
Oh, other way. Okay, here we go.
So if you brought this, this building out to there, so it was in line with the ten-foot setback, it seems to me you would eliminate a variance.
That was idea number one, and I was told it wouldn't make a difference. So, so that's why I didn't do it. We can do that, we can absolutely do that.
I don't make the final say on that, but it doesn't make sense to me.
It didn't make sense to me either, but, but I defer to Ken, he's the CEO on that, and that's what he remedied.
At least five yards, five feet from the rear inside yard setbacks. It still need a variance because it's too large a building to go to a five-foot setback for an accessory building.
Right.
Because it's attached to the other building, it was a freestanding garage, we could put it five feet from the property lines.
Okay.
But.
We would need a write-up.
I would still. I would still try to make five feet on the rear inside of the garage and ten feet on the accessory, that seems to me you'd have a stronger argument.
Well, we have, we have more than five feet in the back of the new addition. It's a new addition on the back side, in dents from the existing house.
Okay.
So I believe we have six feet there on the back. But on the north, on the north side, we're within three feet.
We don't, we didn't make a decision on variances.
Yeah, right.
We just make a recommendation, so my recommendation would be to try to get five feet from the garage on both the rear and the side, and ten feet on the new addition. And I think you would have a stronger case to the ZBA that you're doing everything you can to comply with certain normal setback rules.
So before the board sort of goes down this road of starting the recommendation process, it was brought up at the meeting with the chair going over the agenda that it might be a benefit to the board to conduct a site visit. Now, obviously, that's just one member bringing it up. What does the other four of you?
I agree. I think there's, there's a lot of variances here, and there's a lot of neighbors around, and it'd be helpful for two of us to see this in person and understand that a little better.
Neighbors are great, by the way. Everyone around, you know, is definitely, you know, well, they know me too, and, you know, I've been a good neighbor and stuff like that. But any work I've done decorating, all that stuff, has been very original to the nineteen forty building, Lindell built the house. I kept it original.
We actually do have letters, right?
It's a time capsule on the underside, it's gorgeous.
It looks really nice in the street now.
Oh, you're gonna see the inside. You're gonna see the inside.
All the neighbors have signbook and support.
Oh, yeah.
We have letters actually from, from the Epsteins, the Curazos, and the Meninos.
Meninos.
Those are the three neighbors on the rear and the two sides.
Yeah.
They look at the drawings and they, they have no objection to it. That was the first thing that we wanted to do before we even started to talk about it.
First, I didn't see the name file, so I wanted to make sure they get to Ryan.
I was wondering, being in Ryan back here, he would be proud of the interior of the house. It's like grandma's, no tin iron in board, you know? It's just, there's some functional obsolescence on the interior, there's no bathroom upstairs, you know, just getting older.
Trying to make it more commodious for them.
Yeah.
And him with the garage.
Oh, please.
So the first thing we'd like to do is send two guys out, and then get their recommendations back, then we have to line up and write up the four, five, six variances that we think we need, and then make recommendations to the ZBA. And the ZBA, they have to, they're the Supreme Court, they have to say, okay, you can do these three, or we don't want that one. Somebody suggested, John may, they could say, move this, this, or move this that way, and we'll approve it. Then it comes back to us for a final site plan approval, and we want to look at it, you know, and just take a look at the materials and things, but it's not in the historic district, so.
Why do we have a site plan approval then?
Yeah.
Because of the variances, that's what. We have to make a recommendation, so we'd stop then. We'd make a recommendation to the ZBA, and then we're out of it, it's up to Ken to move on.
That was my understanding.
They don't have to come back and file.
Okay.
So it's not a site plan, it's just a recommendation to the ZBA.
Recommendation to the ZBA.
Because it's not a historic, so we don't have any, well, a single-family home, right?
Site plan was just listed, John, because of how undersized this lot is, and it was needed to understand exactly what's being proposed to the building.
After they make the trip on election day, we can get the comments from our two, whoever wants to go, our two representatives that go there, and then we can write up what we think four, five, six variances are, and then make recommendations to the ZBA, and then we're done. We go to the ZBA, they make the ruling, it's up to you dealing with Ken about the plans and stuff, we could build the privacy infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Anybody want to volunteer tonight?
I, well, I'll say in advance, I was gonna say at the end of the meeting that I won't be able to make the November 15th meeting on election day myself.
So you should probably not do the site visit because you won't be able to convey back the information, is that where you're going with that?
Yeah, I mean, I could go on the site visit, but I won't be here to.
Explain.
Answer questions of what I saw.
I'm always happy to go, but I've been on a lot of them, so I'm also happy to say to someone else if they're anxious to go.
I'm willing to go.
I can't go, I have a schedule on Thursday, so.
Luckily, you're interested in going out there.
My suggestion that we should have one.
You should go.
My job. My job. I've been on the last three.
I wrote the name down like you're.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
The, the two-story addition to the existing home, I see bedroom four, so how many bedrooms is the existing home?
Four.
Four bedrooms.
That's right.
Okay, so you're not adding any bedrooms to the site.
There are two very small bedrooms on the first floor, we're eliminating those in lieu of the two bedrooms that we're adding, and that will become a sitting area that's adjacent to the downstairs.
That doesn't mean septic approval.
Correct, right.
Okay, but on that, that line, I'm thinking, where exactly are we looking at the existing septic system on the site?
We have two.
Right, each building has its own septic, if you go back to the site plan, it's indicated. You might want to zoom in a little bit.
Yeah, it's tough to see.
Zoom into the house first if you could. Okay, so the top, whoop. If you could pan a little bit to the left, so we can see the street, and then you can, there you go, right there. So you can see right in front of the house, you see a circle, it says S. That's the existing septic for the house, okay? So.
That's accessible, which is not a.
It's probably, yeah. Yeah, it's all existing, and fortunately, they have low usage. And then, so that's for the house. For the back building, you can see it right there. It's in the grassy, that's a grassy area, and there's an S there with a circle exactly right there. That's where, because there's a bathroom right there at that corner, and it goes out.
So safe to say none of what you're proposing would appear to have any impact on your existing septic system?
Correct.
Or bathrooms, but the same amount of users.
Correct.
The same amount of.
Yeah, right, light usage now.
Slow rate or site.
We have royal carding, is it, for years that they would, not.
Oh, oil flush.
Royal flush.
Yeah, oil flush.
He's my guy too, I love it.
So the.
And a little bit about me.
The proposed addition to the rear unit, that's this?
Correct.
Two-story addition.
It's really one-and-a-half story. That, the, yeah, so, so that's the first floor, so it's a garage bay.
Yes.
And then a workshop, and then above that, it's basically just attic storage for tools, parts, that kind of stuff.
You, you understand John Clark's point about if, if the addition, if you have flexibility with what you use the addition for and can manage that, because I see you've got a whole size garage door here and two bay doors, this right side of the facade here is seven, you're only three feet from the.
Right.
You need, John's point is that for an addition in the back, it can be five feet.
Only if it's a small garage.
It's a small garage.
Yeah, this is attached, so it doesn't meet that standard, but it's still, you know, sort of a more typical side yard setback for a garage building.
So.
So having a two-story building three feet from the property line is, a one-and-a-half story building, three feet from the property line. Further, you can squeeze that back the better, even if you have to do a little bit of disalignment with the driveway, that would be my suggestion, but I don't know what's.
Well, you know, we can certainly do that, the advantage of the site is, is for all these properties, everybody has their sort of utility sheds and everything back in that corner. It's a nothing corner, basically, it's all utilities.
Nobody's overlooking that.
Exactly, right.
Basically, your arguments apply to the ZBA. All that we've said is from the past, that every inch you can reduce the size of a variance helps you with your case with the ZBA.
Understood.
The rule requires, we make the recommendation, and then they, we've made recommendations, they said no, we've said no, and they said yes, so, you know, we only make recommendations to the Supreme Court, they make the ruling.
Right.
These stairs are up to what, the storage area?
That's right.
Yep. So the point being, that's your option. This, presumably, this would be the garage, and you've got a whole garage here, and it's pretty long, twenty-eight feet long, and.
He's got a Cadillac.
So any thought.
And you need.
I'm running a beat-up Cadillac, it wasn't for that, no.
Yeah.
It's nice to have a room around the car.
So any thought and flexibility you have with the width of this workshop, this new workshop that you're proposing, would, would give you flexibility with this setback, as John especially mentioned, that if it's a two-story, one-and-a-half story high, that close to the edge would be a consideration.
Right.
Let's talk about the driveway just for a minute, there are sort of two, two questions related to it. You know, one is, we talked about a bit of the existing condition bias towards lining up the garage with the driveway as it exists today. But the other related topic is just the amount of impervious surface that you have on the site, right? So one of the variances that we're talking about, or two of the variances we're talking about, deal with lot coverage, right? And I know lot coverage in our code is related to buildings, but there's also a concept of how much water is actually making it into the ground, right? How much water are we stopping and going into the ground? So you call it out as a paved driveway. Is this driveway exactly what it is today and what will be as proposed in the future, or is there an extension and a change to it?
No, no, there will be a reduction, actually. We're removing blacktop, we're removing more blacktop, impervious area in the area of the addition to that building, right? And as well, there's another picture that shows, if you look at that picture right now, you see the green area with the, what are those flowers called? Hot tosses? Hydrangeas, yeah. There's another, not that one, not that one. Well, that's, is that the one? No, no, it's the one, it's the opposite one of that.
But you have like a circular racetrack around the.
Right, and that's what I wanted to show you. Oh, maybe I didn't include that photograph, I apologize.
Yeah, we pull up that racetrack that you're talking about.
That's the one, that's the one, right there. So you see, that's on the south side, right? So that's looking at Mr. Epstein's place. So you see the blacktop continues all the way over there, we're going to be eliminating that blacktop. So the area where the umbrella and the table is, that's where the addition to the house would be, going up to the green. Beyond that, we're going to extend the green, so that impervious surface is going to go away. So actually, I mean, I don't know what the square footage is, but it will be a net loss of impervious surface as a result of the design.
But I think that's, that's an important number to have.
And saving life hydrangeas, because.
They transfer, well.
Even with the rooftop, should be a net, less impervious surface?
Well, I believe so, yeah.
I mean, it's probably useful to understand it two ways, right? You know, we know, we know the increase in coverage, but it'd also be interesting to understand the decrease in impervious non-building area on the site, so that you can be evaluated against each other, right? It's a, I think it's a strong argument for your case in the variances.
I actually say thank you for that, because I love my, you know, flowers and stuff, so on the other end, it's going to be more green, you know, less impervious.
More flowers is good, and then material of the driveway as well, right? So again, it really stretches the coverage limitations, but is there a thought towards non-ashbault, right? Whether it's gravel.
Oh, you and John, yes.
I don't know about that one, Dan, what do you, how do you feel about that? I mean, the nice thing about the asphalt is it keeps, I mean, it keeps the stormwater going where it needs to go, and it keeps for a neat site, you know? So I guess I would have to defer to you on that one and see what you're thinking.
I just want to think it could be a next meeting answer, right? You know, if we're really asked to make a positive or negative recommendation, I think we want to have thought through ways that you can get more rainwater into the ground. And sure, your point's a good one, if you need to direct rainwater to a catch basin or something, then maybe you want the asphalt. But if it's not being directed anywhere, maybe there's an argument to be made that some gravel, some paper, some something would allow more water to enter the ground.
So pavers would, would fit that?
Certain types of pavers.
Certain types of.
I mean, Bob could.
Does that lead to stay away from gravel? Part of the reason why, I wasn't joking, if you, you see that Cadillac out there, it's just been destroyed from being out, and it's not the only car that we've had from, there's a lot of debris from the trees, and we've had storms and hail and gravel and what. and we've had storms and hail and gravel.
Well, we did, we have, a couple of years ago, I'm sure you all remember, was the microcell tornado and not having a garage, our car got totally, I mean wrecked pretty bad, you know, hail, everything. We didn't pay a lot for the car, $24,000, something like that. It was years ago, but it really.
Yeah, but we keep everything in really good shape, as you can see.
Yeah, we like everything.
The $7,000 that the insurance company wouldn't cover because it has an aluminum hood, an aluminum trunk, and an aluminum roof.
Yeah, and again, this isn't a requirement that you change the material of the driveway, but it is a consideration, right? What have you done? What can you do to lessen the impact, to compensate for the greater impact of these buildings? And similarly, also with respect to the neighbor, their views of the buildings, right? You know, that will probably come up at the ZBA, it'll probably come up at this meeting. They already expressed their support, they'll send those letters to Ryan, they'll be part of the package. But just thinking through what their view sheds are, where you're landscaping, where you might want to add more hydrangeas to the benefit of the neighbor, you know, where certain windows might be as they look out at neighbors' houses and maybe, you know, approach on some of their privacy or feeling of the window looking out at them. Just things like that are criteria for being at the question of the property line.
Yes, the way it's boxed in, more or less, all within the fencing and everything and even the height of the buildings, you still don't see anybody, which is good.
So being surrounded by existing fencing is another point to probably bring forward, right? Is that the change from the neighbor's perspective may not be that drastic. It would all be purring above six feet, the line of the fence. So those are the types of things that will help us to decide whether we're in favor of this or not. And then the ZBA ultimately to say whether it's worthy of granting, you know, a variance to say you don't have to comply with the law. You can be outside.
Thank you, thank you. And also, between my husband and Rob here, Mr. Dupont, he did such a phenomenal job. I mean, phenomenal.
Unpaid.
No, phenomenal. And he stood at one window in the back, it's like a balcony, like a Romeo and Juliet balcony. It is stunning. You see nothing from the road, nothing. Nothing changes, all in the back. Neighbors have approved, but his design and what he did was phenomenal.
Well, the site visit isn't important. Do you go to the cycle?
We picked John and Michael to volunteer to go out there and we'll meet on election day and go over this and write up recommendations.
So the, so the site visit would be November 5?
No, 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 no. I think it'll be in the.
Between now and November 5.
Oh, good.
I will email you.
Ryan will coordinate when they're available, when you're available. It's never going to rain again, apparently, so you are on any day.
Right, I was afraid on the way over.
Michael caught the rain on the way over?
Michael saw a rainbow or something.
One other comment I have to say is the builders we have in mind are the Leary Brothers. So just to let you know, that's who I entrust, you know, the Leary Brothers for many years. I know the family, you know, Larry and Sandy, so I've been here 40 years, so, almost a local nowadays. So that's that, and I'm trying to think of what else. Thank you very much for your suggestions, it really helps.
Can I throw out one more? We don't have any control over architects, you heard, it's not in the historic district.
Oh, right.
But my sense is putting a two-story addition over a one and a half story house that looks more Mediterranean and Italianate rather than sort of Cape Cod-ish.
No, it's going to look, he worked very hard on designing the back, right, that it still looks like good old Rhinebeck, you know, which I love the way he did it.
I don't know, I think it's going to be uncomfortable marriage between the two houses.
Yeah.
That's my sense.
The situation is, is it's what they want and it's in the back of the house.
Yes, but if you can make it feel more like a one and a half story building than a two-story building, I think it would be to everybody's advantage. But, like I said, we have no.
I hear you.
It's not in the historic district, someday it might, we will be, and we'll regret it if it doesn't look like it's one piece.
Yeah, no, the way he designed it was just gorgeous and not in just real whatsoever, you know? I've seen some of these, you know, stuff in favor, but who am I to say, you know? I'm just old fashioned and I try to keep inside and out old fashioned and he worked very hard on achieving that, which I'm in awe of, you know, so personally.
So Ryan will coordinate the site visit sometime in the next three weeks, find some time to get together and we can go over this stuff by election day, so come up with it. Okay?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do we have any recommendations from?
We do have one referral.
You're good. That was, that was a shift of gears.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for.
I have a referral from Evers.
Yeah, Rob will, Rob will have some options he can have.
Yeah, because I believe them look better than the.
But you'd be proud of how the house is on the inside, because I see your love and concern for, you know, for Rhinebeck. You know, I mean, Miss Kilmers, let's get a grocery, mom and pop grocery store out here, you know?
They still exist in the.
It changes, Greg Guy, it's changed.
Thanks, good evening. Thanks, Ryan, I'll talk to you soon.
Yep.
What do we have?
We have one referral. This involves 19 Livingston Street. I have two pictures that Jeff can pass down. There is an existing front porch, it's six foot by 25 foot. All of the five by four by four boards are in rough shape. They are asking to remove them and replace them with the same style that there is now. The spindles are currently spaced five inches apart and the railing is only 30 inches high and rotting. They also wish to change the mat spacing to bring it up to the current code standards of four inches spacing and a railing height of 36 inches.
Smaller than a kid's head.
What? Ken and Justin is asking is do you guys want them? I have a picture of what the house looks like down the street. It's the one with the very large front yard, white picket fence out by the sidewalk. And what they're asking is, do you want these folks sent to you guys because it's in the historic district or do you guys feel comfortable, Ken and Justin handling this from the building department side of things?
I think changes to a historic porch we should look at. We can do it in one meeting, but I think we should look at, that's my.
They should bring it up to code, which is a good thing.
I'm not opposed to anything they're proposing. These don't look like historic spindles, but I'd like to see what they're proposing to put in.
Sounds like, didn't he just say that he's just replacing the rotted ones there with the same stuff closer together?
Farther, farther.
Closer together. It says five and four.
Closer.
And 30, not 36. It's smaller than a kid's head.
What they're going to go up to, he wants to bring it up to code height or no?
Make the railing height 36 inches to meet code where currently it's 30 inches.
Yeah.
Tall kids would.
It's going to, I mean, code is code, but that six inches aesthetically makes a big difference.
And then all of the five four by four boards will be removed and replaced with the same style that there is there now.
Well, it'd just take a few minutes to look at this.
Yeah, I'm not saying we shouldn't have them come in, it's just one of those things where modern code doesn't look historic.
Do you want them to come in under site plan or what would you like them, what is the format of how you want them to come in?
Yes, site plan review of historic district amendment to a historic building. I wonder if they can get away with keeping the 30 inch height because it's a historic and they're just replacing the railing in kind.
I definitely think there's a loophole of research before the next meeting, too, because it would be a bit of a shame here. I mean, we probably shouldn't say no if they insist on doing it because of that safety thing, but, you know, when you look at the way these, the rail are looking at an image of the house right now.
Going up to six inches would have an effect.
It would have an effect, you know, it's like notably less than a third of the height of the porch now.
You really see the windows.
You really see the windows and every six inches, you start to get midline of the porch and up on the window.
Taking away.
I can ask Ken, too, but usually the verbatim is if you touch it, it's got to be brought up to current code standards.
Well, I don't know about this, we don't want that.
I mean, if he doesn't, I don't know.
Yeah.
Doesn't touch the rail, he's just touched the.
Right, or touches them sort of one at a time or replaces a rotted section.
Yeah, that would be a replacing kind exercise.
San Antonio, it would be our preference to keep it at the.
Thirty inches?
Yeah, and if I could find the section, I'll send it to Ken in advance, that.
All right, I will let, I will let the contractor know.
I think it's in like the enhanced building code section where they're super.
There's stuff about historic district that we can wave some stuff. Do we have, we have minutes?
I'm leaving that up to you folks. I hand it out.
In the last meeting, Ryan handed out the summary version for June 4th, June 18th, and July 16th. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I took a look at the, we only have paper copies. The only, and I wouldn't comment on what may amount to a 50-page transcript, but the summary version, which I think are good to do, my recommendation had been and continues to be, the summary version should be based on the agenda. So for each agenda item, summary notes. And I'm fine with the summary notes that were in the June 4th paper copies was handed out. My recommendations would be also to add at the beginning of the summary version which members were in attendance or absent. So at the June 4th, it was David, Jeff, Darren, and Michael, absent was John Clark. Also, I think to follow, to establish a protocol where we follow the agenda, any motions that were made should be stated in the summary. Who made the motion, who seconded it, and what the votes were. So in that regard, I would add to the June 4th version that there was a motion to hold a public hearing for 37 Mulberry. David made the motion, Darren seconded it, all were in favor. There was a motion to declare lead agency for 37 Mulberry. I made the motion, Michael seconded, all were in favor. There were a motion also to approve minutes of the February 20th, 24th PB meeting as amended. David seconded, all were in favor. And there was a motion to approve the minutes of the March 5th meeting as amended. A motion Michael seconded it, all were in favor. That way we have a record of who motion seconded and what the approvals were. For the June 18th meeting, once again, include who was in it, who wasn't. On the second item, Northwood Holding, it said that the public hearing was opened by a motion from Jeff seconded by Chairman David Miller. Actually, Michael Gee seconded, just a simple correction. All approved four to nothing. For the item three, the Charles Reed 37 Mulberry, Michael made the motion to open the public hearing. I seconded, all were in favor. Finally, we closed the public meeting, Michael motioned that I seconded it, all were in favor. And there were a couple of more things, the upstate 6415, 6417 Montgomery Street, upstate modernist sign, Darren made the motion to approve, Michael seconded, all approved. And there were two sets of meetings, minutes that were approved. Finally, on the July 16th, the only additions I would make to that, again, are the who were in attendance, it was David, Jeff, John, Michael, absent was Darren. And I'm fine with all of the other notes that were in here and I can just hand to Ryan the notes that I'm suggesting be made to the summary of those three meetings.
Do you want to vote on the next time then?
Yeah, let's see if you can send around a copy just.
I'll send it over. I know, I know a lot was sent.
Yeah, okay. And so that would be just, and then we could just devote them as amended.
And you're going to have more.
Thanks for doing the work.
Okay.
Sounds, sounds good to me because they're simplified.
Yes.
But they have all the pertinent motions and details in there.
And the votes on the motions, so nobody can say, well, wait a minute, you didn't open the meeting or close the meeting or approve, those meetings were, those minutes weren't approved. So thank you for doing that, Ryan. I think they're very good with those additions.
Anything else? John wants to get to the end.
Motion, motion to adjourn, Jeff.
David seconded, all was in favor.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck.